To start this talk for our town hall meeting to discuss our upcoming budget for 2016-2017. I do have some slides to get us started and most importantly, this is going to be a conversation about what is important to you. The purpose of this meeting is to listen to all the voices about our proposed budget that we have for 2016-2017. A desired outcome that I want to see for this is a budget that is going to reflect your values for education. I am here to listen to facilitate this meeting. We do have district office staff here. Dr. Glenn Carroll Holmes and Mike Chatterton are here to provide some clarification if you do have any questions. All attendees are welcome to make their own personal comments as long as it's not to refute another person's opinion. And so where we're going to start off is we do have, the district is estimating expenditures to be, that need to be cut by 1.3 million to align with the revenues. So that's, so we're breaking even. The 1.3 million estimated deficit does not include some of the expected staff retirements. So deficit, so the deficit could be closer to a million dollars, but we're just going to use the district's figure of 1.3 to deficit for purposes of this meeting. So when we're looking at the numbers, we're just going to look at going towards the 1.3. Things that have happened is last fall, the district conducted 24 meetings with staff and community members to shed light on community budget priorities. So when we were doing the blue dot, green dot. And so when we, the method of collecting this data was the superintendent and attendees pre-selected 53 topics that were determined or determined value propositions. These meeting attendees were given four stickers of two different colors, blue and green, to identify areas that were value propositions and areas that were for further discussion. Some of the most valued propositions that they had was obviously class size, something that we all agree on that is something that we do value. And those were the options of grades one through two with a class size of 20 or less, grades three to five with class sizes of 25 or less, and grades six to 12 with class size of 30 or less. Further discussion, and this is the dots that were, blue dots, and that was administrative staff in the district office, the communications department, and international baccalaureate, middle years program. And these are just some of the pictures that were taken of, of where the dots were placed so you could see that there was quite a few options out there. And if you guys need any other handouts of this, just feel free to let me know and I can send this over to you for the slideshow. So the proposed, for the superintendent's proposed 2016-17 budget, cutting some of these expenses were 10% off the top of every year, every school's budget. Also included in there was the Latino parent liaison, the special education parent liaison, the IB program coordinators, professional development induced, mountain rides, after school programs, and summer school. I do want to note at our last board meeting, we seemed to reach somewhat of a consensus on mountain rides, so that is in the works of whether we're going to fund that for the 23,500 or the half. So now I want to start the conversation, open it up for you guys to start asking questions or comments of what you guys think is best. Anybody? Yes?
When do you see us running a supplemental levy?
I would not like to see a supplemental levy. I would like to see us make more cuts and see where we can get our budget down to before we even consider a supplemental levy. That's just my opinion, obviously, but I would like to see more cuts before we even consider a supplemental levy.
Excuse me, Kami, do you want to have people introduce themselves?
Yeah.
Give their address so you know who you're talking to?
Sure.
My name's Glenn Linsley. I teach math at the high school, Wood River High School, and I live over on Creekside Drive.
Okay, perfect.
I'm Pamela Plowman. I have a comment from Diane Barker, sailing the seas as we speak, but she actually has, you know, email capability. So she just wanted to remind us that when the levy was passed and this, all the money came in, that's when the communications department was suggested. And she told me that she put out a survey of two, 300 people, and over 80% of the participants did not want a communications director position created. And she said, one of the reasons that they decided to do it was because a woman donated 25,000 a year for two years to subsidize that position so that we could see if it was beneficial or not. So she said, that's the history of how it started. And so I didn't know that myself, so I thought I would throw that out there.
Was that like a grant?
Yep, from a person, a private person.
Oh, it was just a...
25,000 a year to pay for that position, and then the school took over that salary.
Okay.
So...
Yes.
Steve Guthrie's on two. And I just want to add to Mr. Linsley's comment about a supplemental levy.
Okay.
I think he was dismissed quite quickly, I thought.
No, I don't want to dismiss that completely.
It's something we should talk about. And, you know, the community in the past has been very supportive of our schools, and I think hopefully will always be supportive. That's one of the most awesome things we have going for us and our kids. So I would just like the board to consider that and not be afraid to talk about it.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't want to completely shut off that conversation, but I think that, you know, we're a long ways from getting there, you know? And that's my opinion. There might be other board members who feel completely different than I do, but, you know, this is for public comment, you know, or public opinion. And I certainly respect your opinion on that. I just think that, you know, we need to look at more ways of trimming our budget before we go and ask the taxpayers for more money to take more out of their, put more on their taxes. Yeah.
Michael Beck, 660 El Dorado, Haley, Idaho. When you have that target, do we, it's well documented, we spend more per student than any district in the state. So is there a target number in your mind or in the trustees' minds or whatever that we're trying to get to to maybe bring it more in mind with the state or...
Yeah, we haven't, not that I know.
Because you say, because you're saying the supplemental levy is dependent on future cuts, you'd like, in your opinion.
Yeah.
Just wondering if there's a target number out there.
I haven't come up with a target number, but, you know, something that is definitely, something that maybe we should start looking at is a number of what we feel comfortable reaching for instead of looking at a supplemental levy. I'm just thinking about, does anybody want their taxes going up again? I don't. I don't think there's many people that want their taxes to go up, you know? When there's things that we can do that are not going to affect the children to bring our budgets down. Yes?
John Blackman, 1521 Baldi Drive, parent and taxpayer. Quick question. So when the, when the facilities levy comes off the books in 2020, and those taxes come off the rules, do you see going back to the voters for money for the general fund for an override levy? A supplemental levy?
Well, I think that's something I need to educate myself more about, but, because I don't have an answer for that, honestly. But these are things that we need to look at. But what I would like to ultimately see for the school district is live within their means, like a lot of people do. And I don't see the school district living within its means right now. I see that it's borrowing from here to pay Paul. And if we keep on doing that, we're going to tax everybody for the rest of history if we don't find ways to come within and live within our means.
Or you just presented a balanced budget?
That was a balanced budget, but it doesn't mean that there aren't things that we can further do to bring this district in line with, with all the expenses that it has is not really meaning the revenues. Just because we brought it even doesn't mean that that's completely right. I don't think that, you know, we should start working towards savings, and which we are doing, we do have that plan in place. But I still think that there's a bit more that we can do instead of looking to the future and saying, well, let's ask the taxpayers for another levy. I don't think that that's the thing to do.
I don't think there's any plan to ask the taxpayers for another levy.
I just heard comment about that, so...
Who's asking if your plans are to ask for a levy?
No. Yes?
This isn't necessarily about the budget, but my, my understanding of some of the motivation for this meeting was that sometimes at school board meetings, there's not a back and forth and people get cut off with their timeframe.
Yeah.
And I wonder if the school board would ever want to consider, because I used to conduct public meetings, I was chairman of Haley Planning and zoning for five years, and we used to have a different format where with certain topics, we would open and close public comment, where we wouldn't have a dialogue because sometimes that takes the meeting runs, you know, runs away. But we only set time limits for certain meetings, and we open and closed public comment for clarification. And it seems to me that that's something that you guys could consider doing because you are missing out on information. I would think that would help you make decisions if, for the members that are sincerely interested in the public comment.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So I would think a meeting format change could be another, another way of hearing this. But I also want to commend you for doing this and being brave enough to...
Thank you.
Kami, I have a two-part question. The first part, do you know a figure for what a class one or entry level teacher costs the district next year? Do you have a figure for total out-of-pocket?
I don't. Mike?
It depends on where that teacher actually comes in. But when we budget, we budget a salary of about $58,000. That's kind of where we budget based in. And a rough guess with a benefit package, it's going to be probably 85, 83,000 a year, somewhere in that ballpark.
Is that with their experience?
Yes.
Okay. So not just somebody who's like a newbie that...
Right.
Doesn't have any experience? Okay.
And then the second part of the question is, so 83 to 85 for a, I'm not quite sure I got the sense of what, what level that teacher is. That's not entry level, that was something else?
We hire very few first-year teachers.
Okay.
Very few.
Okay. Someone with a little bit of experience?
One, last year.
Is there like an average teacher experience?
Eighty-three to eighty-five.
Eighty-three to eighty-five is total out-of-pocket. Do you have similar, this is part two, do you have similar figures total out-of-pocket for the superintendent, the business manager, and the assistant superintendent?
I would have to refer back to them because...
Not right offhand, I do not have those numbers.
They're on his chart. They're on his chart.
We do have some comparisons. Do you want to share that? Because we were having a comparison event the other night with 14, so you want to share the comparisons?
Yeah, you know, I think it's, I think it's fair, if you're going to make comparisons on salaries, make comparisons that are fair, not comparisons that are trying to...
No, I'm just trying to get a figure, just an out-of-pocket for next year.
Jeremy, can I finish this, please? When you're making comparisons, it's, in my mind, it's most fair if you're comparing apples with apples on any level. If you compare Blaine County School District teachers at the top of the salary schedule with other school districts, our size and enrollment with the top of the salary schedule...
In Idaho.
In Idaho, we're about 52% higher. If you look at our administrators' salaries and compare it with those same nine school districts, we're in the range of between 40% and 50% of their salaries, of those average salaries. So the salaries that we have comparable to the administration of the districts that we're comparing, they're very comparable with the teacher salaries as well. And if you compare the salaries with the resort areas, our salary schedules are very well in line with all of those resorts, Aspen, Telluride, Jackson Hole, and Park City. So, I mean, they're all within that band. Most of them are higher than our salary schedules.
I think you're just getting ahead of me. I wasn't ready to make a comparison, I just wanted the information and the figure. After that, it may lead me to want to make a comparison, but I just wanted to know where I could get that figure. Could I get that from you?
Not tonight, I don't have that figure right now.
Would it be available?
You would have to submit a public information request.
Go to our contracts? Just to clarify, go to our contracts. So, because I've come to you, and I heard Mike say that 83,000 is what you budget for a teacher, but how much of that budgeting is actually the salary? And how much of that are the benefits?
Didn't you say like around 53,000?
Fifty-eight, fifty-eight thousand for the salary.
But how many teachers actually, we were, he asked about entry-level teacher, right? And a teacher you just hired, you know, your new hired teachers? Because I just find that, I mean, I could look at, I find it shocking that that's the truth, just looking at the teachers we hired, you know, in the district, in the school. They were much under. They were much under, much under, yes. So I just wondered why that 83,000 sounds so extremely high.
Right. Penny?
Yeah, my name is Penny Thayer, and I just have a, I have a lot of comments, but my first comment is on the papers that we've been given tonight. There's one that says draft across the center of it, and I believe that is what was proposed, that's the proposed current proposal on the table with the board, right?
Yes.
It's in kind of small print here. And it delineates information about what is proposed to be cut. And then the other, the other one is the proposal that was discussed at the last board meeting?
Yes.
Is that when it was?
Trusted Corker's proposal.
Okay, so this is another, another option.
Yeah. Trusty Corkers and myself.
And so forth, right?
Yes.
So I just think that's, I was trying to figure out where they really came from. And then this last piece that I picked up at the table out there is, looks like it's giving information about specific to administration salaries and benefits.
Yes.
Okay.
That was not prepared by the school district and has errors.
Okay, fair enough. I haven't read the truth, so can't ask any questions about it.
And I'll make a comment for those of you who have picked up the, the handouts, the one that summarizes the breakdown of the salaries per position. Blackman, Assistant Superintendent Blackman has told me that the assessment and data coordinator and the program coordinator are not receiving any of the family insurance that is extended to their family members, or the dental revision that is extended to the family members, and they are not getting the 401A contributions. So, just to make a note on there.
So those are errors.
Yes, those are errors.
But the others are?
As far as I know, those are correct.
Yeah, I'm curious, I'm expecting to see if I can really work to describe it. Speaking of salaries and all that, I'm just wondering how the district's salaries differ from the teachers. I know from the weekly times, they talk about Carol Holmes and her salary to be very flush and cookie, and I'm wondering what cougher that comes from, how, where does that money come from? And how is it that we have this budget that's so depleted, the 1.3 million, when she's getting a big chunk of change? Where does that money come from and why is it not helping out the teacher at the school level area? How are those two, I don't know the flow chart for it, so I'd like some explanation on that. And sorry if you've already dealt with this before.
No, no, it's fine. Mike, could you tell her from which accounts salaries are being paid from?
Most of the salaries within the school district are paid out of the general fund. General fund is a major fund that pays for all expenses for students. Federal programs make up a little bit, but the majority of it's all paid from the general fund. The general fund comes from two main sources. It comes from local property tax and sales and income tax from the state. We're basically the two major sources of the funding for the general fund.
Doesn't that help out the schools too, though? With property tax and all that? I thought that also helped the schools out as well.
Oh, absolutely. It pays for everything. It pays for transportation, it pays for the maintenance, it pays for custodial, it pays for parapros, it pays for teachers, counselors, social workers, administration, principals, it pays for everything.
At 83, 85% of it is salary and benefits? Where, which...
It's a little higher than 85%.
5.5% of that is administration? The vast majority is teachers and, how many of the percentages are classified?
Classified is about 21%. Administration's about 5, between 5 and 6%.
Would you clarify for everyone the difference between classified, certified, admin, et cetera, the terms you're using?
Certified is somebody with a teaching degree. Non-certified is somebody without a teaching degree. Administrative is typically would be the superintendent, principals, those type of people, assistant superintendent.
Directors.
Directors, some of the directors, yeah.
So they have their own pool of money that's separate from what the teacher gets?
No.
And the benefits? No, so it's all...
It's all together.
It's all, okay.
My name's Stephanie Marquess, I live in Deerfield. I feel like, I have a child in special ed, so I kind of tend to go for the underdog. And I really feel like the cuts are hitting the students and the underdogs. I feel like cuts to the parent liaison positions, the Latino liaison positions, driver's ed, bus passes, those are, those are on-the-ground, basic things that you don't cut. Those are the things that our students deserve. And I feel like all of the, you know, the stuff on the ground that affects the students is what's being cut. And the teachers who deal with those students on a day-to-day basis, as a special ed parent for high school, my daughter's actually in the transition program for 18 to 21, and the high school special ed kids, we attended a conference down in Boise back in the fall. And the teachers and the parapros that attended that conference, and there were six or seven of them, were down there for two and a half, three days, no overtime pay. They were there 24/7 with our students. There were other, there were other things that were coming out of their pocket. They were taking time away from their own families to be with our students 24/7, our special ed kids, with no compensation for that. And I know that the teachers, I'm assuming, because it seems to be the story for teachers everywhere these days, that teachers are having to pay for supplies out of their own pockets. I see the teachers on the ground, if somebody said to me, what's the best thing about Blaine County School District, I would say the teachers. The teachers are working the butt out. Under, you know, as a special ed parent, man, my daughter is not easy to deal with, okay? And I'm sure I can speak for a lot of other parents who have children with autism or whatever else, maybe some of the Latino kids who have language barriers, and those teachers are on the ground dealing with this stuff day-to-day. And I don't think, I feel like the administration, I mean, I know you guys have all been in the school business for a long time, but how many times have you walked into the classroom and watched these parents or these teachers try to deal with kids throwing chairs across the room, are not understanding their lessons? And you have a classroom of 25 kids with language barriers or special ed needs or something else, and those teachers are dealing with it?
Yes.
The best that they possibly can. And to me, the teachers have been the success behind my child. And honestly, without, you know, without meaning, I understand the need for management and administration and all of that, but honestly, I don't see how you can make life harder for the teachers and the people on the ground and the programs on the ground that affect those kids and not, I don't know, it just seems to me like that's where the cuts are being made, and I don't like that.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Jeremy Freiberger, 603 Wood River Drive, Ketchum. I'd like to just piggyback on that comment and saying, and not take away anything from teachers, because I'm absolutely with the last commenter, but I would include all, all in-building staff with that comment, because whether you're a parapro, you're doing nutrition in the lunchroom, you're a janitor, you're coming in contact with students every day, and all of these roles are critical. I, I named three dozen that my kindergartner interfaces with regularly on a weekly basis. And, you know, kindergartners don't have a lot of range. Now, Kami, I'd like to ask you, based on the current budget proposal, how many in-building staff are proposed to be either not replaced through retirements or, or cut in one way or another?
Initially, in the budget, we had 10 and a half full-time.
They're not in-building. They're in-building.
In-building.
District-level positions. There's no, in this, in-building positions being eliminated. Some of them are being moved, depending on where the enrollment is.
Those are janitors.
The high school is the big win next year, but the other positions are district-level positions.
So, so Superintendent Holmes, you're saying that of the 10 listed there, they are all administrative?
No, I said they're all district-level.
They're district-level, so they're somewhere...
They're serving across the district.
Classification, yeah, okay, I get that. You know, I would call a nurse, and I don't even know if the nurse is on here, but I would call a nurse in-building because that's where they do their work. So I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
I wanted to add on to what you were talking about, about the special needs, Latinos, special needs kids, that I just remember, in my mind, it keeps coming back at one of a recent board meeting, how Dr. Holmes put up on the board children on different levels of boxes so that they could all have equal access or equal outcome in their education, and it was called equity instead of equality. And so the neediest children had the most support to get them up there. So it seems to me that the neediest children are the Latino, special needs communities, the ones that, you know, just aren't the ordinary run-through, every child thrives, and that those children need the most support. And when a child needs support, the family support is tied right in with that. So a family knowing how to interface with a school, knowing what programs are available, just being especially brought into the fold about caring for their child and how to do that, seems to be those extra boxes that the child needs to stand on. So with that theory, I just think that those are the last positions that should be cut.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
Pat Murphy, 122 Triumph Circle. I submitted these comments a couple weeks ago to the board, and I didn't, as well as was printed in the newspaper, some of the comments are no longer important because it appears that you're doing something about the school bus passes. But this is specifically about ways to deal with the budget and the cuts that aren't being If you mind, I will just read what I had submitted. "School district's proposed budget for 2016-17, the several positions and programs that will be reduced or eliminated, including custodial, parent liaisons, assistant athletic director, et cetera. The school district also proposes cutting funding for school bus passes, which you're dealing with. It makes no mention of the school spokesperson position, and so what we're talking about is the communications department. This is the position that had been the duty of all former superintendents prior to the hiring of the last superintendent, Lonnie Barber, who..." hiring of the last superintendent, Lonnie Barber, who preceded Superintendent Holmes. The salary for the current spokesperson's position is listed as eighty-seven thousand dollars. I know the current spokesperson is a very nice person. However, there is no other comparable-sized school district in the state that has a full-time spokesperson. Even the largest districts combine spokesperson positions with other duties. If the district needs to save nearly one point three billion dollars, it seems reasonable that the superintendent should resume the same duty that all previous superintendents were able to handle." We go back a couple of years when that position was first funded, as somebody mentioned earlier, with a two-year grant of twenty-five thousand dollars a year. It was very concerning then that at some point the school district would assume that money, and they have. If the current salary of Superintendent Holmes and the spokesperson are added together, that's somewhere in the range of three and a half times the price of the highest-paid teacher. Last fall, when the new contract for the superintendent was big news, and I don't begrudge that, that's all past. No one mentioned that the real cost of the superintendent's position should include the cost of the spokesperson. It's hard not to factor it in as a true cost of the superintendent's position. When academic positions such as dual-language specialist positions are eliminated and reductions in professional development are enacted, it appears that educators are the ones who aren't valued. What are the district's priorities? Isn't it supposed to be about students? Thank you.
Thank you.
I was actually here for the same reason. I was very concerned about the cuts, and that it feels like so far with the Latino liaison, the special needs liaison, the bus passes, the list, it feels like the kids are taking a haircut, and that it's going to affect them at the very base level. And I know that if those cuts stem from the original survey, but I remember when I took this survey, there was one question that I had to laugh, I pointed it out to my husband and said, you know, "What do you value?". And it was, "Do you value art? Do you value technology? Do you value, oh, I don't know, science?". And then it sort of at the end, it says, "Do you value the IB coordinator's position?". So it was like, it was concept, concept, concept person, and then, and that was all sort of in one question. And I remember thinking, wow, I wonder if anybody, first of all, knows what the IB coordinator is, because there wasn't a discussion about that. But I feel like one of the pieces to be eliminated is also the IB program, which I think really up to the bar for kids, even if, you know, the incoming parents don't know it, because they weren't here before. So I feel like that is really up to the bar for kids, and they're meeting it, and that's fantastic. And to eliminate that program would just sweep away all the training that's been done, all the work for the middle, you know, the middle school kids. I mean, there's a whole effort that's been put in and is now firmly in place, like, and then to just go, oh, goodbye, is, I think, so wasteful in the long run. And that it will, all of these programs, especially that one and those coordinator positions, really, really, really affect kids. And so that's all, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, just to address that a little bit, I know that we're still planning on leaving the IB program in place, just removing, is that correct?
Well, the proposed budget as it is right now does not include continuing to belong to the IB consortium and paying those dues and having a coordinator. There is a group, in fact, we just finished meeting for the year, right before this meeting, that is working on the course requirements for secondary ed. And so far, there's very little changes. So some of the things that IB brought to us, like world languages and arts and those kinds of things, are still going to be requirements, or going to be recommended requirements from this committee. But we will not be, as it stands in the current budget, paying the dues or paying to have, be a part of the consortium.
Well, that's interesting to hear. I wanted to make a comment. I don't know about IB one way or the other. I don't have to just went through it, but what is killing me is the thought of ending the program based on a budget without making that decision based on the benefits that it's maybe brought, or, you know, the concerns it's raised. I mean, it feels like if you have this huge program, two implemented, that you should start at the bottom and first use, you know, analyze what the program is, how well the program itself is doing, and then after that, you know, it could be back into a budget decision.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Jeremy.
Jeremy Freiberger. I'll be the first to admit that I've been critical of the administrations and the boards conducting of various tours and surveys. I feel like it's very much been a case of the fox guarding the hen house. In the case of IB, I would bet that the majority of the people who took those surveys put dots on boards regarding IB had no idea what IB is. Okay? And I agree with Kate's comment that maybe we're going about looking at cutting things like IB incorrectly. But back to my comment about surveys and tours, there seems to be a discrepancy in opinions about the blue dot boards and how they relate to the communications department. Now, we have photos of those boards that show the communications department spot covered in blue. Yet I know that Superintendent Holmes has said that, oh, that was just a starting point for the discussion. I wanted to know if anyone has any further comment on that?
I do. If we are going to talk about removing the things that have blue dots on them, because that's what we said blue dots meant, which is not what we said, and I conducted all of those meetings with the exception of one, I think, so I feel like I know pretty well what was said. Those are the, blue dots are where we want to have more discussion, more looking at it. If we were going to go on the blue dots, we would be taking away the second prep. That is not a recommendation on there. There's a lot of other pieces we would be taking away. So to say the blue dots meant we were going to take it away, just to put words in my mouth, which if you can't tell, is making me a little irritated, because I conducted all those meetings. I'm the one who led them. And we did then create a survey that helped the public understand what were in each of those areas and delve in further. What is important to them? World languages, art, CTE is important to them. Having teachers available to work with kids one-on-one to provide feedback and stuff is important to them. So we protested those things. Just like in the communications questions, being involved in meetings like this is important to them. They listed what they used the most to get information about the district. Those are things that comes down to the communications department. Are we cutting the communications department? Yes, they're taking a bigger cut than any other department. Are we eliminating them? No. That is not our recommendation.
I?
I think Glenn was next.
I just wanted to follow up and say, I made my comment about how I feel about the integrity of the surveys. I'll end there.
Kami, thanks again for doing this, all this love and honor. Back to the levy thing.
Yeah, no worries.
Here's the deal, I'm a veteran teacher in the district. I'm at the end of the salary schedule, so I'm looking at no raise next year, after a half percent the year before, and whatever little pittance there was the year before that. So I'm seeing nothing. And I'm not poor, but I'm still seeing no raise at the same time life expenses are going up. And in fact, by getting no raise, I'm getting taxed, because I'm not seeing anything, my cost of living is going up. Just like you, I don't like paying higher taxes, but what you're doing in a sense by not running supplemental levy is you're taxing a few people instead of the entire community. And I ask that you reconsider that and think about how important running that supplemental levy is to our salaries. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Glenn.
I want to go back to the liaison positions. The impact of those cuts on parents and families and then down to their kids is beyond description. And so much so that I'm going to try not to correct. Latinos, it seems pretty obvious to me, if there's a language barrier in there and the parents are involved and want to help their kids succeed in school, they need somebody who can help them understand, who can help them communicate their needs and their desires and everything else. That's what these liaison positions are for. And we have a significant Latino population. What is it, half? No, close to half?
I think it's over forty percent.
That's huge. That's big. You're cutting that, the Latino parent liaison position, to me is, I'm baffled. I don't see how that can be justified. I really don't. The special ed, one, granted, the special ed population is not huge in this school, but I will tell you as a parent of a child with special needs, that understanding the special ed system is a nightmare. A nightmare. And as new parents coming in, it is overwhelming, it is confusing, it is stressful, it is awful. It's awful. And it's awful, I think, for special ed teachers. The special ed teachers and the paperwork and the IEPs and all this stuff. The special ed teachers spend more time on their paperwork than they do working with our kids. The parapros take the kids, while the special ed teachers are in the room scratching their head over how to do an IEP that isn't dictated by the school district. The school district doesn't say you have to do it this way. The federal government says you have to do it this way, and the school district has to comply with that. It takes, the special ed teacher who's there to work with the kids, it takes all their time away just to do this paperwork that changes every year. It's a nightmare. The computer systems change every year. It's a nightmare. So the teachers are stressed, and the parents, if you get rid of the liaison position, then the parents, the only other person the parents have to go to is the teacher. The teacher's already overwhelmed between working with the kids and the paperwork and everything else. So you take that, another burden, and you put it on those special ed parents or the special ed teachers by taking away that liaison. At the Ketchum, the Ketchum thirty-thirty meeting here recently, the special ed liaison, parent liaison position was described as somebody who does posters and mailings, and I'm sorry, that's very incorrect. Very incorrect. That is not true. She helps us make sense of IEPs, and I'm not talking about the current liaison, I'm talking about the position, I'm not talking about the person. That position is there to help us understand how IEPs work, to help us understand how to advocate for our children, to help us understand how the system works. It's a nightmare. All of it. That liaison is there to help us understand how to do that, how to navigate those systems that are absolutely overwhelming, not to mention the government, the federal government paperwork that has nothing to do with really the school district. You eliminate that position and you put that responsibility on special ed teachers who are already overwhelmed. And I just don't, again, those, both of those positions, that the parents are key. I mean, if they're involved, parents who care about their education, and in Blaine County, that's pretty much everyone, if they care about their education, they need somewhere to go to find the answers. The teachers are already overwhelmed. Where are they supposed to go? That's what those liaison positions are there for, and they're needed. And I don't agree with them being cut.
Yes, Michael Beck. I want to make a couple of observations. I serve on the financial, I've been on the financial advisory committee for the district for the past two years. Several months ago, we were tasked with helping target, helping the school district target a fund balance number, fifteen, I think we ended up fifteen to twenty percent of one year's revenue, and a target date to build up that surplus, because the fact of the matter is, the district spends more than it takes in. And that is not a sustainable, long-term position. So when you step back from it, and I look at this thing from ten thousand feet rather than down in the details, my feeling is, I've seen, I'm an accountant with a accounting practice, I have clients who have laid off employees, who have cut benefits, have closed doors, have moved away over the last eight to ten years due to the economy. This district, as a principal, as a guiding principal, we all would agree, nobody, I, my household can't spend more than it takes in. It just can't. I don't know where all the cuts are, that's the job of the elected officials, but in principle, we must not spend more than we take in. And the businesses and the community has tightened their belts, and to be honest with you, over the last seven, eight years, I haven't seen a lot of belt tightening at the district.
Here, here.
So that's, kudos to you, because that's, I don't know, that's where, that has to be the guy, that has to be the north star here.
Yeah.
At least for a while until we build up our revenues. And that's the only way you do it. To build up a fund balance, you've got to, you've got to take in more than you spend.
Yeah, yeah.
Penn?
I would just like to say a couple of things. One, kids in Blaine County are getting a good education. I have three, three children that have benefited from the teachers of Blaine County. That being said, I feel really strongly that you and the other trustees are tasked with deciding how to cut the budget enough to balance it. And I think that you guys are intelligent enough to look at it and recognize that cuts that are close to kids are not a good idea. Cuts that are further from the student's educational experience and therefore their success are something that we can more, it's more palette, it's something we can handle cutting. We have to really look at that. So I respect that you guys are really going to look into that and make sure that we're not cutting too close to the kids. I think somebody said something about a haircut. I don't know where that came from. But that made sense to me, because we really, really need to protect their education experience. And so liaison positions are very closely connected to their overall success. So that I would like to say. And then thirdly, there are a lot of people here tonight, and I'm glad to see people here. There are a lot of people not here tonight. I personally have received phone calls from people who I know, and they know me, not just random people, they're people I know, who work for, I mean, thank goodness, not random people, right? People that work for the school district, people that work in the classrooms, people that work on the janitorial staff, people that work, let me think, in various different places within the school system, okay? And they won't come to these kind of meetings because they're afraid of retribution. And I don't know what that's from, it might be just a false fear, but I can tell you that it's real. And they're calling me to say, Penny, what can we do? We don't have a voice. How can we have our voice? And I'm simply saying, well, show up and take the, take the hits. But I don't really think there's retribution, but they feel it. And so there's a lot of people that you're not hearing from. People who are on the ground and know what's going on are not here. And so I don't know how to get to them, get them to the board, but that's a problem.
Heather?
I want to thank you again for the meeting. I want to follow up on Patty's questions. My name's Heather Crocker, I was with the twenty-eight forty butterfly guy from one side. And I think it's great to see how many people are here. I'm just curious how many people are here from Zone Two? Show your hands. Okay.
Can I follow up on a comment on that one? My understanding is?
I was just curious, because when you asked me to publicize the meeting, you said it was for Zone Two residents. So I don't know how good of a job I did reaching Zone Two. Sorry about that. Hopefully we can do a better job reaching Zone Two.
Heather, just a question. Was it, is it correct? You said you publicized the meeting. So this was a publicly noticed meeting? Is that correct?
No.
Why not?
It's not an official board meeting.
No, it's not an official board meeting, but two board members requested, that would be trustee Bustos and trustee Corker, requested a town hall meeting. be trustee Bustos and trustee Corcoran requested a town hall meeting. Chairman Benyon turned to the board clerk and said, please check with the other board members, schedule a time and a date. Next thing heard is restricted to Zone Two supposedly. And the other board members did not, I don't know what happened there.
Each trustee was told they could have a town hall meeting if they wanted. They were advised not to have an official town hall meeting.
Told by whom?
By the, by our attorney because they were advised not to hold a public board meeting. That was a town hall meeting. It would be a violation of their own policy.
What policy is that?
The school board's policy on how they interact with the public. I don't know what the number is. I was a top my head.
So you're saying that the attorney told the board members that they could not have a town hall meeting with all of them together attending to converse with public?
Correct. This, a school board is a formal body when they are sitting together as a formal body. There are statutes and policies that regulate how they interact. I know earlier Kristin Anderson was talking to changing that policy, but right now they would be violating their own policy on how they interact with the public.
I think you misunderstood my comment. I'm asking them to change policy and ask, I'm telling them they have the right to change the way they run their public.
Well, that wouldn't involve changing that policy because their policy determines that.
Didn't they just change that this past, in the past six months? They just changed the policy again on how they interact in public. Actually, they made it more restrictive, giving more powers to the chairman and board. Yes, they did.
I don't know.
So if the board as a group decided that they wanted to hold a town hall meeting, I would say it's up to them. If they made their policy, if they choose to make an exception to the policy for this special meeting, they could certainly do so.
If they had the majority that voted that, yes, they could change it.
Can you, just, from having been on the board, we made a law change in the last ten years, but a lot, that time it said that if you were having gathering where three or more of the trustees were there, then you couldn't conduct any formal business. But you, there is, was absolutely no restriction on people being together and having discussions whenever they want about anything.
Actually, the current attorney general says that two board members meeting together is a violation of the open meeting law.
That is clear.
No. That's why I ask if this meeting was publicly noticed. Chairman Benyon asked the board clerk to arrange a town hall meeting, get all the board members on board with a date and a time. So that should have been the instruction to the board clerk, that they all could do it. It would be publicly noticed. It would be perfectly legal. So why didn't that happen?
I just explained to you what I know.
You're saying that Adam King put the kibosh in the whole thing and said, no, you can't do it.
He advised that it would be violating their own policy if they did so.
Great.
Steve?
So I'd like to bring the meeting back to the intent, and that is the proposed budget. And I got to say, you know, these, the cuts are painful. They just are, you know, no matter how you look at it. And that's just, you know, that's just the way it is when you're talking about budget cuts. But I do want to say, you know, again, I am a, I'm a, you know, a district advocate, but more, more than that, I'm a student advocate, you know? I care about our kids. And, you know, it was said earlier, we do have, I think, one of the very best teaching staffs in the entire country. Our teachers are very, very well-trained. You know, their degrees are off the charts, and that's part of what makes this district And, but what also makes this district successful are administrators, district administrators. You get, I have experience, and when I have had the privilege of being at a roundtable with our district administrators, your district administrators, it is a privilege. That is a, they are some of the brightest people in this country, I believe. And that is why, partly why our district is so successful and why our kids are so successful. So it is painful, and I think the administrators, you know, are, sometimes are an easy target. And they are, unfortunately.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to put it like, we want to cut administrators. What we want to do, what I think is best, is taking away some of those benefits, those administrators who are very well compensated.
And they should be. They're worth everything.
They, they have benefits. The teachers do not. So they have family insurance that is being paid for by the school district. And the taxpayers are footing the bill for that. But they are, and on the other hand, they're also well compensated. I don't see where...
I guess that's something you'll have to work out. And I have another question though. Are the, are the district, the administrators' contracts, have they been signed already or are they still pending?
I don't know if they've been signed.
They've been signed.
So we're not really, we're not talking about the sixteen, seventeen year. You're talking more about the seventeen, eighteen budget year?
I guess it would be, you know, but these are also still talks since this has never been done in quite a while, having a town hall meeting. It's still good to know what is concerns that the constituents do have.
The board passed a motion to enter into negotiations, which administrators have never had that opportunity before in this fall. So there will be, but some of them have two-year contracts, some of them have one-year contracts. So it depends on...
But please, my, just in closing, please remember that this is a collective effort. And we do have some of the most incredible people in your district and our district. And that's why our kids in district perform so well.
Yeah. Well, I'm not doubting any of that talent, so.
I just wanted to find out, what other administrators have two-year contracts?
Any district, I'm trying to remember the statute, but by statute, the assistant stewardess. Anybody else?
Curriculum director.
The district level administrators could have a two-year contract.
Student services coordinator.
Can you repeat that, please?
My name is Yurma Quinon, I lead the team board in Woodside. I appreciate it so much that can give the opportunity to the voice for Latin people. I'm from Mexico City, but I may see in shape. My eyes not changed the color, but I see in shape. I try the best, speak the language. It still is kind of struggles for me and it's so nervous. But the privilege that can give the opportunity, working with the teachers with these meetings than other meetings is, is good to us to participate. And it's kind of hard if you can't, somebody can communicate with the teachers, with the principals, can guide us to us where going with the solution for my, our sons. And it is important for us that can, our kids, Matz Berudas, I'm not criminal, but I want my kids can finish, go to college and then know their parents too, wanting to be that way and be good citizens in shape and working together. Maybe come the teachers and give help too. Policemen, doctors, nurses. Really is great opportunity for us can work in this time with the teachers. They can grow in together with us. It's not only the opportunity for them, it's for the parents too, can go together. And thank you so much for the teachers when I struggled with my old son, working together and can finish the high school and it's good to me. And it's still, my opinion, I'm thinking about the mountain rise. Is Matz Berudas use the money for the school buses and carried this transportation and then kids can running in bicycles, walking. Some kids no major exercises and it's good to go walking to come and reduce the budget for something important. And the policeman is good to us too for American and Latin people in this time is very necessary. It's not like a Gapon noun, it is not for elegant, it's necessary. The police noun is very important in the school, in the middle school, in the high school for protection to teachers, to the students, for all community. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. I think I've made myself pretty clear how I feel about those liaison positions, but I also understand budgets very well. I'm a district clerk for a fire department and ambulance service and a library and I'm responsible for their budget, so I get it, okay? Are there ways that we can compromise? Are there ways that instead of eliminating the entire position, we can cut it to halftime? Or are there other places that instead of completely eliminating something, we can, you know, cut a little here, add a little there, instead of just gone?
I think there is, you know, I think that there, you know, this is just, you know, a good place to start, is to start these conversations with the people, to hear what they have to say, not just, you know, each person going to their trustee, you know, which sometimes doesn't work, you know? Sometimes it's like, you know, end of the day, unless there's some big meeting like this, you know, you're, it's not always present. So I think it's good to have something like this to really help start those conversations. So, and I think that there is room for, to wiggle and, you know, it's a pretty big budget. I'm sure that we can find ways to make it work.
If you, if, like, you know, I mean, you have to make some cuts. You've got to balance your budget. You have to make the cuts. But if you distribute it more evenly, so that, I think it's been, I think most people here feel like the kids are where, on the ground level where the cuts are happening. But if you take that and you cut a little less on the kids and a little more up here and a little more over there and distribute it a little more evenly instead of, and I know it's a nightmare, budgets are a nightmare figuring out how to, you know, push and shove and whatever, but, you know, so, I mean, for me personally in those liaison positions, I mean, yeah, I'm pretty, I feel pretty strongly about them, but, you know, if we're willing to give a little bit, then how much is somebody else willing to give?
Yeah. Thank you.
On that note, Jeremy Freiberger, I wanted to piggyback on that and Glenn's earlier comment and Mike's earlier comment. Discretionary spending represents a pretty small percentage of the district's budget. It's kind of like our federal government's ability to balance a budget on discretion, within discretionary spending is, is pretty, pretty weak. You've got to look at the big chunk, the entitlements. In the bus, in the district's case, that's payroll because it's a people business. The administrations, part of the budget is off limits for this particular budgeting cycle, will be for the next one. And teachers are pretty much a done deal now as well. But when Mike said, you know, the community has tightened its belt, yeah, the whole nation has tightened, the world has tightened its belt. So as far as teachers getting raises, yeah, I mean, the community and the world would like that as well. However, given that payroll is where the real action is, I feel like that's where we've got to be looking. Now, if I had Warren Buffett's checkbook, I would be paying our teachers double what they get because I feel like it's that important to society. But I don't have that checkbook, nor does the district. It's all got to come out of one finite pot of money. Someone was saying earlier, if someone gives a little here, then someone gives a little there. I don't really, I can't speak to how our teachers' salary schedule fits in with the rest of our particular community, but I feel that's where we've got to start. We can't look at Aspen. We can't look at Telluride. We can't, we've got to look at Wood River Valley. And if that means that we tighten the teachers by half a percent and it affords us ten new positions, ten additional staff positions, maybe that's something to look at in these straitened financial times. I want to say two other things. One, Penny earlier said, how do we get teachers who are afraid to speak feeling comfortable? It all starts with the board and the board sets that tone. When governments start going down the wrong road, they start stifling public comment. I see this board having taken that path. I'm hopeful they don't go further down that road.
Yes.
Also, I think it's true that Kami, you were elected by Zone Two residents, but you don't represent Zone Two residents exclusively. Is that, is that right? You're elected by them, but you don't represent them exclusively. You represent the entire district.
Kami was appointed.
I'm sorry, Kami, but I'm sorry. So, an elected official, say, let's say Chairman Benyon, he was elected by the South County residents, but he represents the entire district.
Yeah.
For you, for instance, you, you are from Zone Two, but you don't represent Zone Two. It seemed to me that this meeting was scheduled and invited, inviting only Zone Two residents. I felt a little excluded when I read that because I know you represent me just as much as every other trustee represents me. And I wanted to know if the administration's representative could speak to that at all.
What do you want us to say? Kami's the one who called the meeting and...
I publicized the meeting and my trustee Bustos asked I'd publicize it, so I don't know what to say.
Each trustee needs to be in touch with their zone, but they do also represent the entire district. So I don't know what else to tell you.
Yeah, that's a funny one because, like I said, a trustee does not represent that zone exclusively in any way.
No, I just said each trustee needs to be in touch with their zone. They need to know what their constituents say, but they represent the entire district.
I have, I have a comment.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Kristin Anderson, I live in Curtis subdivision of Recordeville, Colorado. I feel like when we're talking about the liaisons, I have a different perspective on the Spanish liaison because I'm not in that community, but I do care about that community a lot. I'm very involved in all of the schools. I've been in PTA all the way through and I do, I've done school registrations all the way through and I do, I sit on freshman boards and I've sat on all kinds of things. But I feel like the current administration, and I had met the previous liaison and kind of seen that in action too. I feel like they've made a huge effort to communicate with and encompass the Latina community. I feel like it's been more effective because it's been more school teacher-centered with people that already have established relationships with students. And that effort has been amazing, like individual contact for every single parent, for every single meeting. And I feel like when we look at that liaison position being eliminated, we get a false impression of the district's commitment to incorporate those families into the system, which has been extraordinary. So I think that, that label kind of casts the wrong shadow on how they're down in that community. And I'm also disappointed that I got taken away even though I wasn't part of bringing it on without talking about its merits. And I do feel like there's going to be world languages and cool things that we're going to say in passing, we value, but we won't have anything concrete to put those in place anymore. And I also really believe in competitive salaries. And I feel like we have awesome teachers for one reason, and that's because they can come here and have a good life. And if they can't come here and have a good life, and same with administrators, and they can't be paid competitively, they'll go somewhere else because they're good people with lots of... of options. We're not looking for the bottom of the barrel. We're looking for the best we can get.
Catherine.
So I wasn't going to say anything, but I decided to last minute. Sometimes I can't keep my mouth shut. I do want to, you know, commend the administration for coming up with these proposals, because this is not easy to do, to come up with 1.3 million dollars. And as Steve had mentioned, you know, nobody wants to make any budget cuts at all. And it's, and it's really, really hard. I, I am thankful that there were not any cuts to teacher salaries in here, because we are, we, we do have to compare ourselves to other resort communities, because I do agree with Kristin, people are going to leave, people come to this community for, you know, the outdoors, the quality of life and whatnot, and it does cost more. And our teachers are, they're, they're paid better than other Idaho teachers and they should be. So I'm glad that we didn't see any cuts to their salaries. In fact, I think we upped the, the wage a couple of years ago and got rid of salary schedule B and they're all on A. And I'm really glad we did that. I guess my, my only comment is to the Board of Trustees and to the administration to maybe go back to the drawing board a little bit and look at some of these, listen to some of these comments tonight and see what else can be done. That would be my, my thought. There's a lot of great savings in here and it sounds like there's a lot that are questioned, the liaisons, the IB programs, some ones that are a little closer to students. You've got driver's ed, maybe you cut that in half. You know, I don't know, but maybe, you know, just, I, I challenge you guys to maybe come up with some other options here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. This is hard to do.
Leah Johnson, Zone Three, again, thank you for doing this. This is great. I'm grateful to be part of this awesome school district and I do think we have in our budget enough revenue to continue running a great school district without increasing revenues and tightening up a little bit. I see the, you know, we've heard a lot about the teacher salaries and the district administrative salaries. I'm curious about the departments, like the building and grounds, transportation, technology department. Are those salaries somewhere to be viewed? I don't, I can't find them. I don't see them on the budget as a, for each individual person in that department.
They're not contracts, so contracts aren't there. Are they listed in the, I don't know if they're listed in the department or the other department? We have compared them, just like Mr. Chatterton was sharing earlier, with other, the other districts, there's a, in Idaho, when you get your I, your SAT scores, you're compared to other school districts that fall in the same range as our student enrollment. So we always go back and compare ourselves to those nine districts because they're the same size as us. We've compared them to that and we've also compared them to other resort areas. If you're our curriculum director, you're underpaid compared to the, to the rest. If, the rest of them though are pretty much in line, just like Mr. Chatterton was saying, our teachers are paid 52% more than these other districts in Idaho. This is a more expensive place to live in Idaho than, than living in Lakeland School District, those, Ski Mountain Home, those kinds of districts. So we know that they're all within that range of 40 to 55%, somewhere in there. All of those positions fall in line. And I think it is the curriculum director who's only paid 36% more than the rest of the state, so.
Okay, so what, speaking for, in the technology department, how many are on staff?
Let me look, let's try and find it. If one position is being reduced next year, then how many are on staff? Can you find it real quick?
That's a good question while she's looking.
Nine.
Nine, okay. And so there's no way really other than to look up maybe a monthly payroll, you know, their names of.
Yeah, monthly payrolls on the web.
I, I know, but I, they're salaries. They're individual salaries in those, each department.
I think, Leah, I think there was a public information request recently where they asked for all salaries or it was listed with all the salaries.
And that's what we, sorry, that's what's required to know is a public information request. It's not something you can click on the website and find out.
Well, we have to have a document that we can just put out.
But it's not, it's not available for us to know unless we ask.
And payroll is always available. Payroll was going to be monthly on that.
No, I mean, the communications department is, you know, totally in the, talked about and I, I have to say that I think since we have a communications department, I've been much better informed and it's been a good thing. But I think there are other departments that we should be scrutinizing as, as well. Everything should be scrutinized.
This is just a quick question. I'm just looking at this. I don't think you guys put this together, but.
No.
I just have a question. The very, the bottom position, it says programs, C R O.
Coordinator.
What is that position?
It used to be the ELL coordinator position and this year it was switched to the program coordinator.
What was the ELL? English.
Language learners. I'm trying not to say people's names.
Okay, English language.
And we had, we had that position that coordinated only that program.
Okay.
This year we changed it to the program coordinator, so it also, it does ELL still. It also does Title I, mastery learning. I'm looking for help. There's enough, there's a fourth thing and I can't remember, so, but.
So it wasn't, that's not a new position then, it was just a?
Retitled and given more work. No.
Okay, thank you.
Pamela.
When you were talking about departments, so I wanted to share some information I got. I don't know what the nine schools are. I wish I knew that you compared to nine similar sized districts. When I went into similar sized districts, these are 20 in the circle around us from 1,200 to 5,400, but I contacted the schools to find out what different departments that they had to see how they compared to ours. And out of these 20, four districts have assistant superintendents, the rest only have a single superintendent. Out of these 20, we're the only ones with a communications department. There's one person who handles communications among other things in Madison. And data and testing coordinator, one, two, three, four, five out of 20 have data and testing coordinators. So those are whole departments that we have that aren't very common in the other districts of our size.
All right, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to go back to that IB position and I just wanted to emphasize, Kristin made a comment about the fact that we are held to a certain standard by being part of that program. And I just want to, I think that's really, really important to remember that by keeping IB implemented and the IB coordinator organizing and doing that, we are maintaining that certain standard versus just sort of falling out the radar, making choices that maybe wouldn't fit the standard.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Sandy. I have three kids that went K-212. I had a, I mean, IEP, a 504 plan, I had a gate kid, I had kids in athletics and they all graduated with over 3.5. So I compliment the school district and the teachers. The budget, I have two, two comments. I don't, I personally would not like to see any position taken away for a community to take a position away versus letting it be taken. What I'd like to see is everybody takes just a little chunk of their change. The chunk that I see that I, that really stands out to me is, it's not the salaries, it's the 30% on top for pension. So my understanding is that the school district has to give 12% to teachers. That's for the pension. And then, if you look at the rest of the state of Idaho, each individual is required to contribute their own pocket change. For some reason, Blaine County is paying that other 6% for all teachers. I love all the teachers. I love, they're all my neighbors. But I don't understand why that's on my budget. I'm in private industry, I'm just like the other CPA here, that, I'm sorry, I have to pay my, for my own 401K and retirement. So I just would like, and I kind of heard that there's this property right, that once teachers are in, they get longevity and they have a property contract. You can, we can, we can grandfather people in, but as a trustee, I would just like to offer new contracts for new people coming in. You put them on a salary schedule, we're going to give you 12% on top of your salary. I'm sorry, you're making $100,000? We're going to give you 12%. $12,000 to go to your retirement. Kick in your part. Now, I'm not really sure what this other one is, this 401, any contribution that we're also adding, so, and I don't, I don't know, I, I know that somebody else presented this, but you got salaries, you got some medical benefits. Love it, great. But if I add a employee contribution of 6.79, employee, employer contribution of 11.2% plus 9% on top of your salary, every administrator or somebody are getting 30% to their retirement. And I just, I think that that's where we could kind of change the way. Okay? On my side, that's just, this is dialogue. I am, I am not on.
Can I ask for clarification? Does that Percy match, the retirement match, is that for all district employees or just administrative?
All referred to.
All, so the teachers get that as well?
And how many, how, what my dialogue would be, how many other counties in the state of Idaho pay that other?
That's an interesting question.
I think one.
One?
I, 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 the dialogue, I don't know. Not many. How many districts are there in the state of Idaho?
It doesn't happen that way for state employees. State employees, transportation department, fire departments, libraries, they, the employees pay their 6%. The employers match it.
Yeah. I know the, I know the city of Haley is cut their, you know, tying their budget too.
Everyone is paid or take their share percentage. And I just, I think that's really a good way to look at save, I think that you can save like $2,000,000.
Yeah, thank you.
Kami, there's a gentleman back there who's been following us.
Yeah, sorry.
My name is Brian Camilli. I'd like to compliment the school district for educating my children very well. One thing I think that you should look seriously at in the budget, and I can see it both ways, but the two hour prep period that teachers get, I'm just doing the math in my head, seems like a lot of money. I'm a commercial fisherman. I don't get a two hour prep period of every day. They're like, pick fish faster, go harder and you'll get picked. That seems like a pretty simple thing. I often see teachers out at lunch at 1:30, probably taking advantage of their prep period. So I'd like to just, you know, to look at that instead of all these other positions. That's a pretty simple one. And another thing I'd like to, for everybody to consider just Wood River Valley being a leader, instead of comparing Wood River Valley to Aspen and all these other communities. Forget about everybody else. Our salaries are this, we're the leaders and this is the direction we're going. Forget about everybody else and do our own thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it appropriate, as teachers, is it okay if I respond to Brian in this?
Yeah.
Form? Glenn Linsley at the high school, and we do have those two preps and you're absolutely right, that is expensive.
Yep, and I can see it both ways.
Yeah, go ahead. Just for everyone to know, we use a lot of that time for working one-on-one with kids that second time. We use one of the prep periods to plan our lessons, to do grading, things like that. The second one's almost all dedicated to working with kids one-on-one, helping kids out, understand things, what's going on and all. Now, like you, I'm a taxpayer, I just want to save some money and do we throw away that one-on-one time? And I think that's a dialogue that has to happen with all of us in here.
Yeah, and I just want to further comment on that. I've actually gone in and I've heard from those teachers as well about having, especially at the middle school, I have, my oldest is in middle school, so.
Yeah, but wouldn't that be an easy solution? Maybe they could cut it back to 1.5. It's probably tough with scheduling or you think of all the man hours, that would add up very quickly. I mean, turn that back.
When we say we could save 1.5 million, I mean, I'm super in favor of those prep periods because my kids are always in their teacher's training those prep periods. I've never heard of a teacher taking a break. But I'm just wondering, when we say, oh, we cut 1.5 million, does that mean we cut that many positions and those teachers teach that many more classes?
It'd be currently right now, if teachers taught six periods instead of five, it would be, the reduction in teachers that we would need would be a savings of 1.8. I'm not recommending that, I'm just giving you the numbers.
Could you explain that a little further? A reduction of 1.8?
It'd be a savings of 1.8 million dollars if, if all of our secondary teachers taught six periods instead of five periods.
And that would, the, the result would be that teachers would actually be not working here.
They would lose that prep period.
We would not.
Be eliminating teacher positions.
Was it 17 teachers? Do I remember right? 17?
Oh, gosh.
I thought it was 18.
A lot.
It was 18, 1.8 million. And we figured, okay, that means each teacher costs about 100 grand.
I'm not recommending that, because if we want to close that achievement gap, those kids that are struggling are the ones who need that teacher one-on-one, one-on-two time. Am I recommending they do that with that second period? Yeah, and a lot of them already are, so.
Yeah, I thought some, Penny.
One more comment. That too, we were talking about it a few minutes ago, and I think it's pertinent to discussion, talking about the budget. And I've raised this at other, at other board meetings, but I've been told that our organizational chart of, at the district level is in revision and looking to be, some, some positions are, are being moved about and changed. And I feel like that must have some impact on the budget. That, what I'm saying is some of the current positions that we see as administrative, I've been, I've been told that by, well, by our assistant superintendent, that there's some, some changes coming. And I think that those changes should be spoken about in, in open, so we know what those numbers are and how they do affect our budget.
I, I think there must be a little bit of misunderstanding here, because when I joined the district two years ago, I submitted a revised org chart to the board, which was then passed into policy. And that is staying as it is, with the assistant superintendent being in charge of the operations area of the budget. And so he has been over all of the operations for the last two years and will continue to be over all of operations. What will change is with Mr. Chatterton's retirement, we will have a finance manager, not a business manager. So instead of having a business manager who oversaw some of the operations, who then reported up to the assistant superintendent, all operations will report to the assistant superintendent.
And I was told that the assistant superintendent's position was being title changed to become operations manager.
No.
Then I've been misinformed by the assistant superintendent, because that's what he said to me.
That's his work, but we're not proposing changing this type. There's no proposal to change that org chart.
Okay, so then the numbers that we are looking at right now that are paid to district salaries are not going to be switched and changed. That's going to remain. Thank you.
Sure.
Jeremy Freiberger, I really appreciate the comments from the two CPAs who have spoken tonight. I was a vocal encourager of professional independent financial counsel for the board when that issue was happening last fall. I still think. I still think it's incredibly important, critical for our district, and is very affordable, given what it could offer us. I want to go back to comments about the average teacher salary being roughly fifty-two percent higher than state average? I think that's right? And then uh.
Than the nine other school districts that are in our size band.
Oh, okay, there we go. And the curriculum department director's salary being thirty-six percent?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two percent, I think that needs a little bit of context. So when you're talking about the average teacher salary, that's one number. Then the curriculum, and of course, we need to include benefits because that fifty-two percent's gonna run right on through all the benefits too. Then you're gonna bump up quite a step in salary to the curriculum director's level, and so that gets the thirty-two percent surcharge, based on these other comparables. I think that's the context we need to remember here. If you've got a hundred thousand dollar property and you're paying three percent tax on it, and you've got a million dollar property and you're paying one percent tax on it, let's look at the final number of tax. Okay? So, let's not, let's not just say, oh, look at what a deal we're getting on that curriculum department's thirty-two percent surcharge. I think that needs a little context.
I think that other piece of context that's missing sometimes when we talk about salaries is teachers work a hundred and ninety-day contract, and the curriculum director, the people that work a two-hundred-and-forty-six-day contract.
I think that's a very important point.
Yeah.
Okay, Jane Walter, I believe at two-two-one South River Street. I just had a question about IB. It seems like the budget discussions came at the same time as some negative comments from teachers about the program. And so if the program encompasses so many things that the community values, like critical thinking and project-based learning, world language and arts will equal importance as math and science, for example. And it is designed for all kids, it's not just a special track. I was just curious, is it really a budget issue? Or could it be more of a round issue, or do you know?
You know, I don't know, I know that there's, you know, been a lot of talks about it, you know, we did hear a lot of public comment about, you know, with some negativity about the IB program, but you know, we've also heard it on the other flip of the coin, you know, that there is a lot of great benefits, and we don't want to do away with IB. But I don't know, I kind of would refer that back to when.
Gosh, you could, you could argue it either way.
Yeah. It's hard to say, you know, but I think that there's, you know, it's important to have that conversation, to say, no, you know, we don't want to lose IB because of all these important things, and you know, this is just a great start to having that conversation and saying, nope, this is what we feel is important, and we need to include that back in the budget.
The IB affiliation was one of the lowest things on the survey, but a lot of the other things that are part of IB were high on the survey, so.
You're talking about the evaluation was low on the survey, or high on the survey. How about doing what she just said? Let's evaluate the program before cutting it. And by evaluating it, why don't you not open that survey to the general public who have no ID, idea even what the initials IB stand for? Let's talk to the parents and the students of middle school and high school. Not just the IB program kids, but all of the kids in middle school and high school and their parents. Ask them if they know what the program encompasses and how they feel about it. Narrow the survey to the people most affected, and then do something.
Yeah, I think that's really good feedback. Go ahead, I'll get you next thing.
I was just gonna have Leah Johnson on the IB program. I definitely got the feeling, I watched the videos from the meetings, and there were a lot of teacher comments, and that's, ever since then, it has seemed not necessarily a budget issue, but it certainly seems worthy of a discussion between the teachers, parent, everybody involved.
Yeah.
Before making a decision, either way, and if it's not a good program, so be it, but to know the real reasons behind.
Yeah.
Saying that would be good.
I think that's a good point.
I just wondered, since, since the budget's already written, and it will be harder to change a lot of things, and maybe as you're trying to use the budget. What I meant is, do you think it would be possible this year to put a few of those things back that are obviously critically important or extremely valuable to people? Put a few of those things back in, and then just not grow that reserve fund so quickly? I have a feeling that next year there will be some reductions in expenses for benefits for administrators and some things like that, I think that may happen. We may find some more savings in other areas that aren't affecting each other directly. And I was just wondering, but since our contracts are signed, it's a done deal, maybe would it be possible to put back some of them, but just not grow that fund as quickly, the reserve?
Um, I think we, you know, that is still open for discussion, you know, since we still are in the talks. This meeting is one of those talks, you know, especially with myself, you know?
I have some information to answer Kate's question. Uh, first, talking about growing the reserves, there's currently a fund that's called the lottery fund. It has three point two million dollars sitting in it. It has been segregated from everything else for years. It's a lottery, it's not in touch. It could go to the general fund to be used for whatever the board decides.
In Blaine County, there's three point two million?
Three point two million dollars with the budget. It's called, it used to be called the land lottery fund, sometimes Mr. Chadwick just calls it the land fund. I've spoken to the state department of education people at length about lottery money. It used to be it had to be used for maintenance, buildings repaired. Two thousand and seven, the state law changed. I can give you the name of the person you need to talk to at the state. So the three point two million dollars sitting there, that could be changed to reserves, and then, that reserve fund would be pretty healthy. Then, that allows them to do other things. Another point is, I know, just a minute. Another point is that you're talking about, well, it's all too late, the budget's already written, et cetera.
No, I mean, the administrative contracts are already signed.
Sorry. We're talking about compromise, everyone could compromise, everyone could say, I volunteer to give up my special perk of the district paying my extra retirement, or my family's health insurance. Everyone could compromise by chipping a little in the pot. But also, the states usually set a deadline, the budget, the district budget must be submitted to the state by July fifteenth. State law says an annual meeting should be held in June. The board set this annual meeting to be held on June fourteenth, that's the usual second Tuesday of the month. However, and they usually vote on the budget at the annual meeting. However, state law does allow that the budget vote does not have to happen on the annual meeting. It can happen fourteen days later, which is June twenty-eighth, which allows more time for all of these possible changes to be made.
My.
Money, and sorry.
Okay, let me correct you again, Barbara. You made the comment that lottery funds are going into the land lottery camp since two thousand and seven, that's not true.
No, no, I didn't say that. I said state law changed in two thousand and seven, I said the lottery fund has been sitting there for years.
Okay, the land, the lottery funds we receive from the state of Idaho goes into the general fund, has been for the last nine years.
Yeah.
The land fund that was created by the board twenty-five years ago, more, the majority of that money came from excess funds from the general fund, and a small portion of it came from lottery funds when the lottery was first enacted. We haven't been depositing that money into land lottery fund for many, many, many years. So, you are right, the money can be transferred to the general fund to help alleviate some of the fund balance issues that are. The other thing is, is the general fund budget is balanced right now, so if we add expenditures like these positions on back into the budget, we will have to find, cut someplace else.
I'm going to say too, that none of the general fund is going into building up that assigned fund balance right now. That, I mean, it was hard enough to balance this, let alone saying we're gonna take eight hundred thousand or whatever and put it over here to build up the assigned fund balance, that's not happening this year. And that is a further discussion the board will have to have after they pass just this one-year budget on how they want to address that.
Yeah, so instead of, the way I'm looking at this fund balance, the whole fund balance issue, it's about a three and a half million dollar commit over the next five years. So it's roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that's gonna have to come from the general fund into those, or somewhere else to fund it, so. The easiest way is to look at some way for, to transfer money into the general fund to where we're not looking at eliminating seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year for the next five years to honor the commitment for the fund balance policy. That was what it would take. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is probably, well, for example, for the teacher salaries, it would be seven to eight positions a year for the next five years. For a non-certified position, it would probably be twelve to fifteen positions a year. So those are the things that we're trying to look out for, saying, okay, what's the best solution? To still maintain what this district has tried to do for the last thirty years, look ahead, plan ahead for school sites, plan ahead for things that come up.
Penny.
I thought I was done talking. Um, as you were explaining that, I was, I was looking at this chart about some other, possible other solutions to this budget problem, and at the very bottom, it talks about the silverback money that is currently deposited into the Blaine County Education Foundation. What's to say that cannot come into Blaine County School District?
In my mind, it is coming back into the school district already, because that, that money between, the agreement that we have between Silverback and the school district is that money can be spent on after-school programs, professional development, and technology funds. That's the agreement that we made with the Silverback when we signed that agreement years ago. So that's roughly between eighty and ninety thousand dollars a year in royalties.
Just the last two years.
This, that's the last couple of years. So, if that continues, you know, that's what we can count on, but I don't know if that's gonna continue, I don't know what's gonna happen with Silverback.
I, the thing that worries me about trying to make Silverback a funding source is it really has been only the last two years of any significant resources that are permanent, and I would call ninety thousand dollars significant in the scheme of the larger budget. And what I predict will happen with that is it will either take off, and a large educational provider will buy them out, which, then we get our share for that, and it's done, that's the end of the resources. So, somebody like Pearson or one of the big boys in the education provider world will buy them. Or it will fold, and either way, the revenues from that stop. So it's, it's not a, it's like finding a quarter on the sidewalk, it's not gonna make a big dent in our budget.
And so that money that's in the Blaine County Ed Foundation from Silverback, that's tagged for those three things, has that been used every year? Or is there a chunk of change sitting at the Blaine County Ed Foundation?
There's less than two hundred thousand dollars there now.
That's from Silverback?
Yes.
And that's cumulative over all that time.
Right, so, so over the past several years, there has been money that's been moved from the Ed Foundation to the school district to support those programs you were saying. So that's, I, I understand that, I just, I, I feel like that was.
I wish it was, I wish it was the found arranged resources, but it's, it's not.
Well, Penny, it really, it, I mean, people may look at that scene as it being poorly arranged. In my mind, I don't think that was very poorly arranged at all. At that point in time, when the board made that decision, the budget stabilization levy was coming into effect. They were, the board was concerned whether or not, if Blaine County School District started getting a lot of money on royalties coming in from the software development, how would that impact the legislative view on what we receive on the budget stabilization levy? So, the board felt like it was the best idea is to keep it out of the school district's books, put it in the foundation, but we still have full control on it.
And this is a percentage, some kind of percentage of the Silverbacks' earnings, right?
No, it's a percentage of the annual seat charges that they charge to other school districts.
Why is their earnings, right?
To license your position.
Jeremy.
Jeremy Freiberger. Two comments. Mike, what's the estimated value of Silverback? I think it's about eighty-five million, right?
Oh, God.
I think it's somewhere in that neighborhood.
Look, I know this, I know last year they were trying to raise nine hundred thousand dollars, and they were having a very difficult time raising it.
Well, they're publicly traded, it's.
So they can't be, they cannot be worth that much money, if they can't even raise less than a million dollars.
Okay, I'll move on.
I wish, I wish they were worth that much.
My point was that two hundred thousand dollars over that period of time for a, a company valued at whatever it is, seems like not a very good deal for Blaine County School District.
If it was worth that much on a degree.
Mike, you had mentioned earlier that cutting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is equivalent to eight, eight certified teachers or ten to twelve non-certified teachers. I have a real problem with any, any cut being always associated with cutting staff. I think there are lots of ways to move around money. However, I feel that the administration quickly goes to, it's this many staff on the chopping block. And I'd rather that wasn't the case.
You know, that's easy for you to say, Jeremy, when eighty-five percent of our budget is tied into salaries and benefits. So I mean, or fifteen percent.
I agree.
Or seven and a half million.
I agree that it is the lion's share of the money, and it's where we should be looking, but it doesn't necessarily mean cutting people. We had a conversation just a little while ago about our pensions. Thank you, that's all for now.
Barb.
A point. At the last board meeting, trustee Bustos requested that this year the district not buy any new vehicles. No new school buses, no new extra vehicles, vans, et cetera, et cetera. And that was evidently, someone said, we'll think about it. Next thing we know, as part of the consent agenda, here's an item, oh, we're gonna just lump it in with everything else, with the bills paid and all of that. We're going to approve the transportation director being directed to go out for bids on the new vehicles. So that approval was given. Does that mean that the purchase is already in the works?
For the, for the buses, yes. For the vehicle, uh, the vehicle, service vehicle was, was being purchased out of this year's budget. The fifteen, sixteen budget. The buses are being purchased out of the sixteen, seventeen budget. And let me add a little bit to that as well, Barbara, that you probably don't understand, is every year we receive money from this department of transportation for depreciation on our buses. And so we receive approximately a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of depreciation that has to be spent on additional buses. So yes, we could say, no, we don't want to spend a hundred and eighty thousand on new buses this year, but we're gonna walk away from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand in depreciation.
Now wait a minute. Can you explain that a little bit more?
In Idaho, a lot of the funds we get are tied to specific things. So we get transportation funds that are for transportation and transportation only. So if we don't use it on transportation, we don't get it.
And as far as I understand, that's just for the buses, correct?
That's for the buses.
It can't go to bus passes, for instance.
And we have to.
For you, or is it being shared with other people, or is it gonna be available to the public, or how?
Well, I would like it to be available to the public, but.
I am paying for the video crew, and yes, I would like to make it to everyone who wants it. I would like to make it widely available.
Okay, thanks for the information.
Any more comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming and sharing your opinions and concerns and raves about this school. and raves about this school, especially about our teachers. If you have any further comments, please don't hesitate to contact me. I certainly appreciate all this feedback. So, thank you again.